Okay, wonderful. Thank you for clarifying that. Our next item is the approval of minutes July 19th, 2022, City Council meeting and September 2nd, 2022, special meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Our next item is additions to the consent agenda item J, budget amendment 2023-16 Paramount Building Expansion Project, and item K, budget amendment 2023-18 Recreation and Parks Master Plan Agreement, Addendum One. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the additions.
Make a motion to approve the additions.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Our next item is the adoption of the agenda with the items. Is there a motion?
No move.
Have the motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the North Carolina Department of Transportation Municipal Agreements Schedule C and D to perform installation, repair, operations, and maintenance of highway signs and markings, traffic signals, and other traffic control devices on state highway systems, streets. Item B, to adopt a resolution to apply for local assistance Stormwater Infrastructure Investments Funding for Maze Lake Regional Stormwater Project. Item C, to approve a restructuring of the Budget Manager Physician Level 30 to Assistant Finance Director Level 35 as recommended by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, effective upon City Council approval. Item D, to approve a reclassification of the Recreation Superintendent Physician and Park Superintendent Physician from Level 33 to Level 33 as recommended by Piedmont Triad Regional Council, effective upon council approval. I will note on item D, I just noticed prior to our meeting that the documents have Level 31 converting to Level 31 instead of Level 33. Beverly, could we get that updated? We're all aware of it. But if we could get that updated for the package. Item E is to approve the reclassification of a park maintenance turf technician, Level 19, to a park turf technician, Level 22, or 21, I'm sorry, and a turf care specialist, Level 22, to assist Assistant Turf Manager, Level 24. Item F, to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donated self-contained breathing apparatus to the Burlington Fire Department for training purposes. Item G, to adopt a resolution confirming the City of Burlington's completion of the Asset Inventory Assessment, AIA grant. Item H, to approve the Design Build Compliance Document pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-128A1A for the Entertainment Venue Project at Burlington Athletic Stadium. Item I, to approve budget amendment 2023-17 and approve Phase Two Change Order for Remedial Investigation Waste Delination Activities Task Order 106 VP-2 Cost Adjustments to the Contract with S and M E for the Old City of Burlington Solid Waste Disposal. Item J, to approve budget amendment 2023-16 for the design of the Paramount Building Expansion Project, and item K, to approve Addendum One to the Recreation and Parks Master Plan Agreement with Barry Dine and Associated Capital Project Ordnance Budget Amendment 2023-18 for design services including synthetic soccer fields, pickleball courts, and tennis court covers. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next item this evening, we'll get into our public hearings. We have numerous public hearings, and we'll have, we'll call upon each public hearing from the attendees tonight at that time. So, item one is a public hearing that's been set to consider adopting a resolution in support of economic development performance grants and incentives for project wavelength. At this time, we'll recognize our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Give me one moment to get this thing up and running. There we go. Good evening. Sorry about that little delay. But I'm Peter Bishop, the Director of Economic Development of the City, here to present to you Project Wavelength and their request for incentives. Project Wavelength is Steratech. A Steratech provides x-ray, e-beam sterilization services for the medical device and life sciences industries throughout the country. This company was founded in 2016 by their CEO Larry Nichols, who is with us today. They have their headquarters facility in Fremont, California, in the Bay Area, and just opened a second facility in Lewisville, Texas, just north of Dallas. I'm going to ask Larry to come to the podium here and offer a couple of words about his company, a little more information about what they're going to be doing in the facility. So Larry, take it away.
Welcome, Mr. Nichols.
Well, as Peter said, we have been in business for about six years and opened our first facility. The demand for sterilization of medical devices, pharmaceuticals, and tissues is tremendous right now. There are not enough facilities throughout the United States. Demand is always replaced for our services. We have been looking at a few different locations. The North Carolina area does offer some advantages to some of the other locations. We are trying to decide which area to build our facility. We sterilize medical devices, pharmaceuticals, and tissue products through electromagnetic radiation, which is a totally safe form of radiation that when you turn the switch off, there is no radiation. We plan on building a 150,000 square foot building off of Anthony Road on 85 acres of property. We will be also, since 150,000 square feet, we will not take anyone here all of that property. We plan on using the remaining portion of the property to bring in other life science companies to bring their businesses here, and the sterilization will be an attractive option for them to have locally.
And if you have any questions for Larry throughout the presentation, you can certainly address him or myself direct.
Okay.
And to summarize what Larry mentioned, so we're looking at a 150,000 square foot facility on 13 of the 85 acres that are going to be purchased under contract. The investment in real and personal property at this facility is estimated at $71 million, and that's about an even split between the real property and the personal property in this facility. One of the significant investments are 10,000 pounds. Did I get that correct?
10 million pounds.
10 million pounds, sorry.
That's for each of the three bonds. So it'll be a total of 30 million pounds of concrete that your local contractor, concrete contractor will be in business for a little while.
And that concrete, of course, protects everybody else from the e-beam sterilization process. The project, according to our understanding, it will create 50 jobs over those first five years. The company's very likely to create more than that over a longer period of time, but that's what we've agreed to, to write into these contracts, and with an average salary of $56,800, which is a little less than $10,000 more than the average annual salary in Alamance County. And as Larry mentioned, and something that's really exciting and a little bit different about this project is the company's buying more land than they need to develop a life sciences and medical devices industrial park around their facility. So in addition to seeing Burlington as a great location for their business, they see it as a great investment opportunity. I think that's a very positive sign for what we're doing in the community. This is just a sketch that we're working through for the facility with a main area of 120,000 square feet and an addition there of 30,000 feet. There will be a new road constructed for the purposes of this building, as well as to serve some of the other sites that will be later on in the development of that industrial park we mentioned. And then this is what the whole site plan looks like for this property, for this 85 acres, with the Steratech facility there at Site Two, and then four additional sites that could be developed for additional partnered companies or other life sciences companies. If this looks familiar to you, I think this helps tell the story of economic development. 10 years ago, this council and several, I think Mr. Owen was still our manager at that time, worked with Sheets to develop a distribution and kitchen facility that's just south to the bottom right of below 3B. And this is the remainder of that parcel. And at that time, council encouraged the property owner to go through a planning process and put this site plan together with a local engineering firm, Ali Williams, Carmen King, and the Goldenly Foundation helped build the sewer line that's dotted in red that goes through the site. So investments from that previous project are paying off with this project, and it just goes to show how long-term investments in economic development really help set the table for the future. And this for, to orient yourself, is just the general area where this project is taking place, on Anthony Road. You see the airport to the far west in this picture, and then NC 49 to the east. We had jokingly called this the Texas Parcel for a long period of time because it just looks like the state of Texas. And then the orange outline is the 13 acres that will be for Steratech. Well, that's a good general. All right. This is some pictures of Steratech's newest facility in Lewisville, and to me, this is a beautiful building. It looks really nice, really great design. Hoping that we can get this level of quality here in Burlington for this facility, but this is a very high-quality facility that they just finished constructing in the Dallas area. So on to some of our incentives that we're talking about. So I'll summarize the city's incentives and then give the whole big picture. What we have offered to Steratech is a cash grant, performance grant of 1% of the taxable value of their real and personal property over a five-year period. And that estimated maximum would be 710,000 over five years, or 142,000 per year. In addition to that cash grant, we're offering $525,000 toward the construction of the road infrastructure that will serve this property and also serve the future industrial park. An additional sort of a front-end investment, we have offered to waive permit fees for the building permit, our water and sewer tap fees, and other fees that go along with the development process. That's a value of about $175,000, so a significant value there. And the total maximum value achievable under this incentive agreement is $1.4 million, $1,410,000. On a total incentive picture, I really like this slide because it shows the partnership that the City of Burlington has with Alamance County, the Alamance Chamber, and the Chamber Foundation. David Putnam is here with the Alamance Chamber in the crowd, grateful for their support. We have Alamance County who's participating in this project, the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation, and a couple of different funds within there. And then the North Carolina Community College System and ACC have customized training here, and that's designed to train local folks to work at these facilities, to be adept at the different skills that sterilization will require. And it gives us a chance to hire as many local people as we can for the initial hire and then the long-term process for, for the company. So you see some pretty good balance here as well. We're pretty close in number to the, to the county in our total incentives. The local incentive's 3.2 million, and the state incentive's just over 3 million. So again, pretty close to even in putting this piece together. Some of the project benefits from our perspective, and there are certainly many more than I've listed here, but first and foremost, this project modeled to have a positive financial return to the city within our five-year grant period. That's a very important checkmark for council to show the viability and the strong return on this investment. The project represents a new life sciences investment. Now, we are blessed to be home to one of the largest life sciences companies in the state and really the country in LabCorp. We have some other life sciences companies, both small and medium-sized. Throughout the county, there are some good-sized ones. This will be a different type of service that will work hand-in-glove with some of those other industries that are already here and some that could come. So we're really excited to have that type of service. This is also a longer-term opportunity with the development of the industrial parks. So we're kind of really getting two birds with one stone and getting a new project off the bat, and then a commitment to develop further sites. And as you all know, in economic development, buildings and sites are currency, and without currency, you're, you know, you're not going to be able to buy anything or get any good companies. So having sites under construction, developed, and ready to go for new companies, it's going to be very important for our future economic development. And then finally, as I mentioned, we've had really strong partnership throughout this project. I was at the Alamance County Commission last night where their incentive package was passed. Worked closely with David Putnam and other members of the chamber staff. The chamber president and members of the county staff were here today for lunch with Larry. So we've gotten along really well on this project. We've worked closely together. So we've developed a competitive and I think very equitable incentive package for this company. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Nichols, I would be happy to answer any questions.
You and I were talking earlier, we've really been working behind the scenes on this project for how long?
Maybe a little less than a year. So it's, it's been a good period of time. And I think Larry and the company owner were in town maybe eight, nine months ago for the first time to take a look at the dirt and get a feel for what we were doing. So yeah, there's a really long sales cycle when it comes to these economic developments.
And the partnership between everyone has come together to make this happen. I don't want the numbers to overshadow the importance of our community college system and what they've stepped up and are obviously willing to help with on this project. And Alman's Community College has the new biotech center. So it's just kind of, all of it kind of fits together very neatly, and we just happened to be in a good spot for that.
Yes, Dr. Gatewood happened to be at the meeting last night for the county commissioners, and Larry and Dr. Gatewood were in the meeting and exchanged information. So that'll be a great budding relationship with that new building in progress.
Any questions for Peter or Larry? Good. Okay, this time we will open the floor for public comments. This is a public hearing, so we'll ask if anyone wants to come forth and give public comments. If so, as a matter of courtesy to our clerk, if you would, state your name and address when you approach the podium. So is there anyone from this side that would like to speak during public comments on this matter? It's me.
Thank you. My name is Alice Westelman. I'm at 2966 Maple Avenue. And I live in an area that's going to be impacted directly by the traffic. I don't have a problem with the development. I am, I am concerned that appropriate planning is going to be done to make the roads safe for the amount of travel and that the utility systems that are, because I've got a huge right-of-way going right through my property, it's going to be directly impacted by the increase in volume and the type of volume. Because right now, it's mostly domestic, and now it's going to be more industrial. Going through that pipe that I get to breathe as I walk down my own property line. So I am asking the city to perhaps have some kind of open course of how we're going to work with North Carolina DOT to make sure the roads are appropriate for the amount of concrete tracks that are going to be necessary to go down there and how that's going to impact my way of life as this is being done. And going forward, this is going to bring a continuous amount of truck traffic down the road. Right now, I get woke up every morning at 5:30 for the truck traffic going to Sheetz's system. I don't think I'm going to have any ability to do anything about that, but so what I would like is, is to hear some kind of conversation beyond a due diligence, traffic plan that's only going to consider a specific part of the traffic from this development, a wider traffic to study that's going to look at all the new homes that are being built on Hanford, as well as all the industrials, so that we can actually have a meaningful discussion with the North Carolina DOT on how these roads should be planned so that it minimizes the impact on the people that are already living there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike or Nolan or Jamie, could you just please give us a brief summary on kind of how the NPO traffic in the area will approach Jamie right in there? And, you know, just how we do look at planning from a broad perspective. Obviously, our UDO is going to take care of traffic because of this impact, but then there's a broader regional traffic planning mechanism that's in place that looks forward-thinking. And from a standpoint of roads that haven't been developed yet to kind of where we're going to go with this. And then the third piece, obviously, is going to be how traffic's handled during construction. So if I'm hearing you correct. So can we just touch base on those a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So as, as you may be aware, and just as a reminder, any site that gets developed will go through a review process. The site also needs to go through the technical review committee with a, with a formal site plan application. So as part of that, if it is, if it so meets the requirement, which it may, there would be a traffic impact analysis that would assess the conditions, you know, within the area and then guide any type of improvements that may be warranted, widening, turn lanes, and so forth. So Mike wants to speak more to that, but that would be all part of the development process that would get reviewed by NC DOT and our traffic department, our transportation department for, for all of those things. And we go through that process as part of the site plan approval process.
We do have, as Jamie mentioned, we have the specific site development process, but we also have an onboard 20 to 30-year transportation plan process that you don't need for Burlington, but for the entire county. So we do, we do look at specific sites. This one may require a traffic impact analysis, which looks at the impacts of the site and requires the applicant to provide a litigation, maybe if they need to widen roadways, improve intersections, traffic signals, things like that. And that will be mentioned in those studies, and that will be a responsibility before we will approve that development. NC DOT is our partner. We depend on their budget when they widen and improve their roadway. So sometimes it may not be as quickly as we would all like to see. But certainly, if we see something that needs to be improved, that's going to be a request. It's going to come from our department and from the city, so we can push NC DOT to provide that additional improvement, maybe off-site or beyond this area. So really, two levels of approach and analysis that go in to a site like this.
Thank you, Mike. And our comprehensive plan calls for that area to be our industrial development quarter. So council member Ward and I serve on our NPO, which is Western Orange County, all of Alamance County, and Eastern Guilford County, to be sure that we're collaborating on growth and future road systems. So all of that is taken into consideration, not just because of this project, just in sound planning in general, but to Mike's point, some of it won't happen immediate, but there has to be a trigger to warrant the next step. So all of that has been vetted through, and your questions are very valid. And I'm sure staff will be working and TRC will be working with the applicant on the construction facet to be sure that there's minimal impact as, as much as possible during construction. Is there anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Eric. My name is Henry Vines. I'm a farmer in the southern part of the county. Snow camp, 3450 yards to drive. Mister, I know that this is going to be an economic plus for the county. I understand that. And there's a lot of this land is being developed as farmland too. And I'm, you know, it hurts my heart that this is happening. The things I'd like to say tonight is, is not residential, but, you know, the old property, rental property in Burlington. And the business people in this county, such as myself in the county, we never get any kind of break or anything from taxes or anything when, you know, when we develop something. A good friend of mine is doing a $2 million project, poultry houses. And when it comes to the end of the year, they're going to be asking for those taxes. I think this is a good company. I don't understand why we have to pay them to come here. It's my understanding that they basically already bought the land, so I wouldn't think they're really going to move and go anywhere else. I have to ask you not to support this initiative because that's the way I feel. And I just think you should think about all the businesses that have already established in this county and in this city, and I'll ask for that. We have all the assets that this company needs to operate in the Community College. We have Elon College, University right here. And the supporting of new customers in this area is something real with Duke, Carolina, Wake, all these different medicals, you know, facilities right here. It's a big asset for them to move here. They would pick up a lot of business. And that's all I have to say, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Just a brief point of clarification. The property has not been purchased. There is an option on the property, but there has been no sale.
Thank you, Mr. Nads. Is there anyone else on this side that would like to speak on this topic? Is there anyone on this side? Here, now, is there a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Any questions for Peter, or if not, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution? Peter?
Yes, sir.
This is a, if I'm not mistaken, this is a process that has been going on for some time, is it not?
That's correct, yes.
So you're involved, and it's been for close to a year now?
Yes.
And I would imagine substantial research has been done in terms of, I know with the company, but also, you know, the, this, the future of a company like this in this kind of community. The concept about Mr. Vines just made is a valid point that North Carolina would be an attractive location.
Yes. We did, you know, what we would consider underwriting of the firm. They did provide financial information as part of the incentives process. Of course, that's trade secret confidential, but in reviewing those numbers and understanding the company and their growth trajectory and some things that Larry mentioned, has mentioned to me before, is that there's tremendous growth within his very specific niche of sterilization, not using chemicals, not using, you know, x-ray, but sticking with that e-beam. Those factors all combined give us a lot of confidence in putting this deal together.
Can you explain what three years positive means?
Yes, that means that, so when, after the building is constructed, so really when the, when the taxable assets are in place, within three years of that time of when they get that CO, we will have already paid off the investment in the incentives.
Which is, in compared to past history, pretty quick.
Yes.
In terms of, some have gone as much as five years, if I'm not mistaken.
The term of agreement is five years.
That's correct. Yes, it is.
Any other questions for Peter or for Mr. Nichols? Mayor, if there's any other questions, I'll make a motion. I'm making a motion to adopt a resolution to approve any kind of development incentive agreement with Project Wavelength for the duly noted project and the property included. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion here. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Our next item, item number two. A public hearing has been set to receive public input on the community development FY21-22 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAEPER, with the consideration of approval by City Council to meet HUD requirements. of approval by city council to meet HUD requirements. At this time, we'll recognize PTRC staff, Harrison. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you for having me this evening. Um, each year, the city of Burlington is responsible for submitting the consolidated annual performance and evaluation, a report to the housing urban, uh, department. The report focuses on expenditures of community development, block grants, um, and program income funds, accomplishments and progresses that have been made to meet the consolidated plan goals. These were goals that were established in the year 2020 for the years 2020 through 2024. And for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, uh, 2022, the city of Burlington expended a total of $1,212,717. And these funds were used for housing rehabilitation, public facilities, public infrastructure, um, and administration and planning costs. A comment period was published in the Burlington Times News with the start date of September 1st and ran through September 16th. We have not received any comments. Um, in order to submit this report to HUD, uh, it's required that we hold a public hearing in place to meet the citizen participation plan with the consideration of approval by councils.
Okay. Thank you. Is there, uh, any questions from council? If not, this is a, a public hearing, so at this time we'll open the floor for public comments on the, uh, annual, uh, performance and evaluation for a CAEP. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Now we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? This time we'll entertain a motion on the, uh, community development CAEP.
Mayor, I'll make a motion through the community development, since the year 2122 CAEP, the year PPR.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you being here. Item three, next item on the agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone property from medium density residential, MDR, to light industrial limited use, LI LU. The property is located at the south side of the intersection of Danbrook Road and Bonner Bridge Parkway, addressed as Zero Danbrook Road and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106952. At this time, we'll call on Plan Director Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'd like to just recognize the applicant. I believe they have a request for you tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Wall, if he's present, I'm the applicant.
Welcome, Mr. Wall.
My name is Ms. Lawson. Hi, good evening, city council members. I am Matt Wall, attorney general, active in this position. And at this time, we would like to request that this matter of public hearing be, uh, continue to the October 18 council meeting, um, for several reasons. Uh, one, to allow us some additional time to just get our facts and our information and our reports together to make our presentation at that time. We got one individual who was going to give some, uh, expert opinions about valuations and the impact of, of, of the potential rezoning on property valuations was not able to be here tonight for health reasons. And, uh, frankly, I think for the benefit of the, both the, the proponents, as I am in the opponents who are, I'm sure here in force, um, and just for the process in general, I think it would benefit to have the, the complete council here, uh, all five members to be able to discuss, deliberate in common and to make the decision on this. So we are respectfully requesting that this be continued to, to the October 18 council.
Thank you. Three questions for, uh, Mr. Wall or would council like to make a motion?
Mayor, in light of only pre-council member tier, and I understand there, there will be, uh, some comment from both sides, I think it'd be better to have a full council here and I would make a motion that it be, the hearing be continued, what, October 18th? Is that what you're requesting?
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion to continue this item to October 18th? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That will see you October 18th. Hold up just a second. Okay, thank you. Item four, next item, item four. A public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone property from medium density residential, MDR, and general business GB to general business limited use, GB dash LU. The property is located on the northeast corner of Cameron Street and East Davis Street, addressed as 606 East Davis Street and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136462. This time we recognize Jamie Lawson once again.
Good evening again. So this item is a request to rezone the property. The property is shown highlighted on the screen in, uh, teal with a hatch. It is located in the medium density residential zoning district and the general business zoning district, and the applicant is requesting a general business limited use rezoning request. Um, this is per the UDO 3.18. Uh, the limited use is specifically requested by the applicant are outpatient treatment facility, uh, coffee shop, office, medical office, professional and a restaurant, um, indoors and outdoor seating. The future land use designation for this area calls for it to be traditional residential. This rezoning request is, um, compatible with the commercial uses within the area and the existing residential. Um, at their July 25th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of four to one. And, uh, this item was briefed to you at your work session on August 15th. Staff does recommend approval, uh, consistent with, um, consistence, consistency statement sheet, option one, uh, provided in your packet. Staff and the applicant, I believe, is here, Mr. Jerry McGinnis, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Uh, just for clarification, is the limited use restricted to those five items you mentioned? Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Mr. McGinnis or for, uh, Jamie on this side? Jamie, could you, could, could you go those five items once again, so everybody can hear those items?
Sure. And I think I've also got the, um, ordinance, uh, which I can also share with you as well. Just want to make sure it's the right one. No, that's not right. There it is. So it's these items here. Got to make sure I'm showing the screen again. So they're listed on the screen outpatient treatment facility, uh, coffee shop, medical office, professional office and restaurant indoor and outdoor seating.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time we'll open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak, uh, public comments on item four on our agenda? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak, uh, item four on the agenda? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? Thank you. Uh, at this time, if there's no questions, we'll entertain a motion on, uh, item four. I think blue sheet is our reference.
There, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the request to rezone properties on medium density residential, MDR and general business GB to, to be rezoned to general business limited use GB dash LU. The property is located on the northeast corner of Cameron Street and East Davis Street, addressed as 606 East Davis Street and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136462. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that a future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial use. Action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. And the request is compatible with existing zoning and land use in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item, item five. A public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone property from medium density residential, MDR, to office institutional, OI. The property is located at the northeast corner of Caldwell Drive and South Meven Street, addressed as 3549 South Meven Street and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114046. Jamie, you're still on?
I am.
On point.
Can't give, I got a couple items, so.
You got a, you got a bunch of them.
Yes. So this item, as you, um, have included in your packet, is a request to rezone the property, which is, I'll show you, highlighted here on the map, again, in field, patch. It is currently zoned medium density residential, and the request is to rezone the property office and institutional. Uh, the future landing designation calls for this area to be suburban residential. Staff feels this is consistent with the residential uses and the commercial uses. At the July 25th, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there was a unanimous, um, recommendation of this request. And again, it was briefed to you in your, at your August, um, work session meeting. We recommend approval with consistency statement sheet, option one, provided in your packet and staff and I believe Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Is present, um, to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions for staff or for the applicant, Mr. Waller? You said P and Z was unanimous on this one?
This is conventional zoning, like you said.
Conventional.
You could say that we got a thinking terms of all the uses allowed.
That's right.
As opposed to limited use. Good point. Any questions for staff here? I think it's discussed at the work session in depth. Okay, item five is a public hearing. It is, uh, we will open the floor now for, uh, public comments. Is there anyone on this other end that would like to speak, public comments for item five on the agenda? Is anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak?
Patrick, it was 1981 Blue Creek Drive. Um, I came here to speak and, and y'all kicked my can down the road. So, um, I just, I don't know what I'm doing there, but, um, Smith Elementary School is right there with all the traffic, which I'll be caught. Anything, y'all can do to help mitigate not missing that, um, you know, if it's congruent with, uh, like a small turn care facility, that, that's decided, that'd be great, but just be cognizant of what's at risk. I got to see.
Thank you. I would appreciate you being here. We did have some discussion back, uh, in August about stormwater in that area. But did we ever take a look at anything or are we comfortable with what's going to go on? I know there was some concerns brought up about the stormwater runoff that was created from Med, because of Med Street and the, uh, widening there for some of the residents, I guess, more, uh, south, southeast of, of that location, but, um, is there anything we can do to give assurances to those folks that this project could not make that even worse?
Um, we're assisted rezoning, so we don't have a site plan. We don't know what any, any potential uses are. Once, uh, development plan is submitted, it will go to TRC, Technical Review Committee, and we will look at it at that time. And we have the ability to, uh, request an additional drainage study, require, um, more than what is required by, by the ordinance, if there are certain conditions met, um, to, uh, essentially retain the water, um, you know, allow, permit it to run off in the same manner after it's developed as it did before, you know, so that there'd be some onsite retention or something like that. City Engineer Todd Lambert will look at this a little bit in detail and maybe be able to ask.
Tony, anything you can add to that?
Yeah, so this site is, um, it's about 1.7 acres, um, of the drainage area that drains. Um, there's a drainage channel that kind of drains across Meven Street, uh, through a pipe system, um, and then drains to an open channel, uh, between Caldwell and Delane. That's about 14.8 acres that drains through there. So this is a, a fairly small percentage of that total drainage area. Uh, but as, as Bob pointed out, everything that exists now in that area was, uh, developed before we had a stormwater ordinance. Um, so this site won't look like the retirement, uh, assisted living site beside it. They have, they don't have stormwater controls. Of course, they did everything we asked them to do when they were developed, much as all the houses were. So looking at the existing drainage system, um, the NC DOT improvements on Meven Street are, are sized correctly for the drainage area, um, and even sized correctly for this parcel was developed at. Um, so the pipe size that they installed are adequate, would be the same size if it was a, a city project going on now. Um, and then anything that's developed on this site would have to meet at minimum our, our current regulations, but our current regulations, like Bob said, do, do allow us to look at problem areas, um, so that they're not made worse.
Yeah. Right, thank you. I appreciate, I know you guys had looked into that when, when we brought that up back in August, and I just think that's an important piece of it. So if we could keep our hands on that, is this thing, uh, uh, continues along, that would be great. So. Close the public hearing. Close it again. Just want to be sure I can get it himself sometimes. Okay, any other, any other comments? Other Patrick? Patrick, that, the, the UDO would take precedent in whatever's going in there for traffic. So, um, that's, that's one of the good points of having the UDO and that very, very laborious process of getting it to fruition. So at this time, if there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a, a motion on item five.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request to rezone property zone, medium density residential, MDR, to be rezoned to office institutional, OI. The property is located in the northeast corner of Caldwell Drive and South Meven Street, addressed as 3549 South Meven Street and consisting of Alamance County Tax, Tax Identification Number 114046. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have a suburban residential use. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area, and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signified by a, a, any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries on item five. Our next item, item six, a public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone property from office institutional, OI, to general business, limited use, GB LU. The property is located westerly from the intersection of Meadowwood Of Meadowwood Drive and South Church Street, addressed as thirty one fifty eight South Church Street. And consisting of Alamance County tax identification number one one two eight eight four.
Good evening. So it's come to staff's attention that there may be an issue in terms of the location of the sign for which this. Rezoning was posted. So just in an effort of being. Conservative, we would request that this item be renoticed and readvertised for the October fourth. Public hearing for city council. I'm not sure if the applicant is here. We did notify them by email in advance of the meeting. We apologize for any inconvenience. It would just be a couple of weeks, but we, we want to make sure that it's done properly.
Sure. Absolutely. Any questions for Jamie on this item? Or is there a motion to continue it to October fourth, the staff's recommendation or request? I'll make that motion. We have a motion and a second to extend this item to October fourth. All in favor signify by aye.
I came here for this, for this particular thing on this page today. I don't particularly like coming here. I've been coming here so much to fight all different cases on Meadowwood and Highway seventy. When all they're doing is stacking more traffic. There's a dental office there and a guy wants to put a restaurant.
Sure. We have to follow the legal proceedings. So. We're all good.
Yeah.
So. Anything else needs to be done with that then? Okay. All right. That is it for item six. Jamie, is that all you need on that ticket?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item seven. Public hearing has been set to consider a request to rezone property from medium industrial M I. To light industrial L I. The property is located northerly from intersection of White's Tunnel Road, Old Trail Road and Anthony Road. Addressed as sixteen oh one Anthony Road and consisting of Alamance County tax identification number one two zero three nine five. At this time, we'll call on Jamie once again.
Good evening. So as you can see, this property is highlighted in teal with a hat. It's currently zoned medium industrial and the request is to rezone it to light industrial. This is consistent with the future land use designation, which is general industrial or the area. The planning commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero. Again, this was briefed to you at your August fifteenth work session date. Staff is recommending approval of this request. With option one in your consistency statement sheet included in your packet. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have, and I believe the applicant, Mr. Burton. Is also present in the back in case you have any questions.
Okay. Does council have any questions for staff or for the petitioner, Mr. Burton? No. Good. All right, item seven, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Anyone on this other room like to speak on item seven? Anyone on this side of the room? Yes, sir.
Thank you, city council. My name is Mike Bittana. I represent K M P L L C. And I want to just first begin with, I really appreciate the first part of the, of the city council today and the representation of nine eleven. I was part of nine eleven. I lost four friends in nine eleven. And I remember for the last month after the accident, lights within my community on for loved ones waiting for people to return home. And so it was extremely touching and it was really nice to see that. I want to thank everybody, the city council, the police. And the fire department for, for remembering us from up the northeast.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm sorry I missed the earlier meeting. I am now a North Carolinian. I drove across the country less than thirty days ago to become part of North Carolina. I represent K M P L L C. K M P L C is actually a North Carolina LLC. It's a real estate investment trust company. We have over forty, excuse me, thirty commercial residential properties under management. In both Burlington, Greensboro, the near area, both, once again, commercial and residential properties. Why I'm here this evening is that we're adjacent to, to this sixteen oh one. We're at seventeen oh seven Anthony and you can see that we have thirty acres right there. We're currently in negotiations right now with approximately less than ten companies. Some of those individuals. Are already in the plans of designing either multiple buildings on that site or one large building on this site. And so we, we're now at the crossroads of a very challenging event where this has been, as Peter would say, we have been. It doesn't happen overnight. And since taking and purchasing this piece of property several years ago. These conversations have been going on for not just months, but for years. As different companies, both on a national level and a, a regional level, are looking to evaluate this land. So what this does, it puts us in a very difficult situation. Because if you vote yes to this, I then have to go back in and reopen work that has already been done. With these companies. So we're talking drawings and site plans and approvals for them to move forward with. And you know, today at these economic times, I don't know what that box is going to open up. So I don't have an issue with my, my neighbor per se, but I do have the issue. If this turns to be light and I'm a medium, there is some issues on my side where I must have a thirty foot buffer. And that equates to one thousand one hundred sixty two feet or fifteen thousand or fifteen thousand forty nine. Feet of area acreage. Now for me, it doesn't matter. For someone who's designing and building a layout, it may matter. And I just don't know what that delivers to us as I look at. To both the city of Burlington and what it can deliver. So as far as the city of Burlington, just some rough numbers here. We're talking about the ability of this thirty acre site to have between one hundred and forty thousand and one hundred and eighty thousand square foot. Of economic development. The, from us just listening to the conversation, this site would deliver be two hundred and eighty. And four hundred and six new employees to the city of Burlington. And so my ask is a very simple ask, is that let's not mess with what we've already done. And I would look for an exception so that my site, which would still stay medium, does not have to change. Because there is, there might be some, what I call the zoning board, to understand a little bit more about it. There is some impact to that thirty foot buffer that goes between our two properties that would have to be modified. If I do not have enough trees or bushes, or I do not put a fence in place, as they told me last week. So thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. I'll take any questions if I have some questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bittana? Helpful for staff?
Yeah, I got something to say.
Yep. So I think we're good. If we do, we'll call you back up. Jamie, can you address that and how this would affect the adjacent property?
Sure. So I guess I just want to make sure I understand where, where your property is. Is it this one here to the west?
Yes, that is correct. Yep. And it's, it goes off the screen to the left beyond there.
Okay. So, so we do require a perimeter buffer, a landscape buffer, when there is adjacent zoning districts. So this property would be M I. So from M I to L I, it's a type C. Buffer, which, which he's correct, it would be a thirty foot buffer. There is the ability, so there's a couple of options. And this would all be determined, obviously, at the time of the site plan application, but he could, an applicant could. A, reduce the buffer from thirty feet to twenty feet if they put in a wall or, or a fence. That's one option for reduction. The other option, it looks like based upon the aerial. That there's existing vegetation that, that's there right now. So it's quite possible that that existing vegetation would count towards a buffer requirement. And that would be verified by, by the city arborist at that time. But it's quite possible that they wouldn't have to remove anything and that, that existing vegetation would count. And qualify towards that buffer requirement as well.
So when you say existing vegetation, the, the thirty foot requirement would still be in play, right?
That's right.
And then?
Or, or twenty feet if they were going. That's right.
So, so that from a, from a thirty foot or twenty foot, that does not change?
Right.
So it's going to be the same either way? Any other questions for Jamie on this ticket?
No.
Okay, this still is a public hearing. Is there anyone else on this side?
What he was arguing about. I'm not quite following what his argument is versus M one versus.
I don't want to speak for him, but I think his, his comment may be based upon the existing zoning, but. Based upon the existing zoning designation. And the adjacent property is the same. There would be no buffer requirement, but when you change the zoning designation and. Your property would go from M I to M, to L I, then that would then impose a buffer requirement. At that point. So. Any property.
You're talking about a bigger buffer?
The buffer, there would be a buffer, it would be an increase. It's not, not on your property, on the adjacent property.
It's not so much the buffer. It's the fact that all the drawings have already been submitted. We're talking about very large companies out there who have to get approval. Those drawings are in play and now we have to pull back and get redrawings and re-submit them for all the people bidding on the property. So what this does, it opens up an exposure for economic stopping of it because these approvals already they made. You know that inflationary times, I think it brings risk to the development of that, that site.
Wait, I guess I didn't, how much have I heard you probably? You said the approvals are.
Entering to a company. I'll just pick it.
Oh, okay.
The company A E C has my land. They've taken the drawings. They've gone site plans. They've gotten senior vice president's signatures. They got president's signatures. They're moving ahead to develop and make an offer of a property. They're also asking us to participate in certain investments on the property. Which I'm okay and ready to support that. Now what happens is that if we do approve this. I have to now notify them that the property has changed. That now I have a buffer of thirty feet that they have to now go back in, redo the changes. Get re-submittals and re-ask for something that's already occurred. So it exposes us.
The buffer right now is twenty feet, right?
It's zero. I mean, the, the only thing that I can add is that any development is going to be subject to the ordinance standards that are in place at the time when they submit the application. So it's, it, it's difficult to. To anticipate. I mean, I don't know if the, if the developers or the proprietors have even contacted the city to, to go through a pre-application conference or if they've been in contact with, with us. But you would be subject to, at that time, when you come in with a site plan, you'd be subject to the requirements at that time.
We have gone to the city. We have met with them. We've submitted several plans to the council. So we have different options that we've come to the city with.
I, I'm, I'm not familiar with their proposal, so I don't know if others have.
I hadn't been submitted by them.
They haven't gone through, as far as I know, they haven't gone through a pre-application conference meeting or the, or submit for technical review committee. So. Not that I'm aware of.
We have, and we've taken your feedback and we've fed it to, so we've met with Burlington. We've submitted our some plans and ideas. Burlington has come back and said, oh, yeah, the sidewalk's here. They're returning radius of the buildings.
Chad Porterfield, they did a pre, it looks like last year.
Okay, so.
So it's, it's been about a year.
It's been about a year then, I guess.
As Peter knows, it doesn't happen overnight.
As you may be aware, the information that we provide at the pre-application conference meetings is informal and non-hinding. We can't predict if ordinances are going to change. We also can't predict if there's going to be rezoning requests. So we always provide that caveat when we have these meetings. It's, you know, we, we try to provide as much information that's accurate at that time. But we, we certainly can't predict, you know, situations like this. So we certainly sympathize. We want to work with development community. Make sure that your, your projects are successful and we're certainly, you know, I think, willing to, to meet with you guys again if you've got some additional, you know, more.
You just bring rest, that's all.
I don't think I have anything else to add.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, and. Jamie, this was a seven of vote from P and Z, is that right?
This was, this was a four, four zero.
Four zero. And I'm assuming when P and Z was heard this, we, this information did not come forward because it's not been part of any discussions up to this point.
No, I, I, this was not discussed at the meeting.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Patrick, you look like you want to speak again. Okay. Wanted to be sure you had that grin on your face. If there's no other public comments, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bob, in light of the situation, do you think?
Yeah, and, and I guess probably, you know, maybe the public hearing, maybe, maybe we should reconsider, you know. You know, I put a motion on for reconsidered closing of the public hearing. And if that carry that would reopen the public hearing, then we could make a motion to continue it. And that way we could solicit comments at the next meeting. So. Having said that, I'll make a motion that we reconsider the, the previous action of closing the public hearing and to reopen it. That's the first motion. Then I'll make the other motion afterwards.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed?
In light of, in light of recently, you know, you know, providing information, I'd make a motion now to continue this matter. I, I don't know, probably, is it a time element?
Well, let me just, we're not trying to make waves or nothing.
Mr. Burton, would you mind stepping forward just so? Our microphone here picks up. And state your name and address for us, please.
My name is Jack Burton. I own the property at sixteen oh one Anthony Road. And the only, this is our predicament. It's why we want it rezoned, is that the property itself, M I cannot, we sell a few tractors along the way, tractor tractors. And with the orders of M one, you can't have a licensed dealer, dealer called dealership to sell trucks on this property. That's where our office is at. Second thing, but you can sell tractor. But you can sell tractor, you can sell heavy equipment, bulldozer or whatever you want to, which is kinda ridiculous because it's a title and you can't do it on M six, but you can do it on my industrial. And this is the only reason I'm trying to get changed. Because my license was down the ground. And we're trying to move it here as our new residence. And I had no idea this was gonna be. That's the only reason we're trying, trying to change, we're not trying to build up the property.
Yeah, not that weird thing.
You know, to, you know, I don't know, sort of let us get a better handle on this thing in light of this recently, you know, submitted information. What about, what about allow us two weeks here, maybe some conversation?
Yeah.
About that, till we learn of it.
I mean, you know, the conversation is that I, I don't wanna change the ordinance of what a M six is and a light industrial is. All I wanna do is get a license.
I, I don't, I don't.
And that's all we're trying to do.
You, you, you know, apart from I'm concerned, you won't be changing, you know, what you requested. You know, it's just a, in, in light of this, I, we just wanna allow a little time for some conversation between this gentleman and you, you know. Because it, like I said, I mean, it's, at least to me, it's, there's some confusion here. Maybe allow a couple of weeks, it can get resolved and come back in two weeks, you know.
Yeah.
We'll, the hearing, you can say whatever you want to at that time.
Yes.
And I think we'd be better equipped to make a decision, a better informed decision, if you'd be willing to do that. I, I would turn.
I had no idea this is a problem.
And I don't think anybody did. And to Bob's point, no one's asking you to change motion, to change your request. It's, it's just every now and then, in our best efforts to have UDOs and staff meetings and have everything buttoned up, we find out something that we hadn't anticipated.
I'm sure.
That's all we're asking, is just a little time to vet through this. To be sure that we're putting our best foot forward for both parties involved. Because we'd like to see everybody develop this thing economically, it enhances. And we'd love to see you move your license to Burlington. That's right. It's been a long time coming. Is that good?
That's good. I'm good.
So the motion is on the floor to continue this public hearing until, what, October fourth?
So is your motion, is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any votes? Thank you. So this item will be carried till October fourth. Thank you, Mr. Burton, and thank you, Mr. McDonough and staff. We appreciate everybody's help getting through that. Our next item is new business. City Council will consider appointments. City of Burlington Advisory Boards and Commissions effective upon City Council approval. At this time, we'll recognize our Public Information Specialist, John Burn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Coming back to you today to continue some appointments from the meeting specifically to the Historic Preservation Commission. And then there have been a series of vacancies that have opened up since that meeting, some of which there are applicants to fill and some there are not. So I, you received a packet with the applicants and worksheet outlining who is, is applying for which commission, and I am here to answer any questions that I can.
So if we can sort of take these one at a time, because we did have some applicants that maybe either did not indicate what board of commissioners are interested in, or they applied and there was no openings. I think we had two of those.
Yes, at the end, there were two of those that, that still applied for, that did not have current vacancies.
Okay. So if we can take these and if it was Police Council, we can take them just, we've got Historic Preservation, we've got Public Transit Advisory, really have Board of Adjustments, but there's no app, there's no applicants there. Then we've got CPAT. So you want to just take these one at a time, go through these? So first one would be Historic Preservation Commission. I know I've vetted through some of these with the changes to the HPC standards and the processes. It's important that we continue to get experts that understand the complexities of this, it being quasi-judicial. And any, any comments on what council would like to see in those three categories? I know Christina Benson had a legal background. I think Bob had pointed that out in a previous conversation that would be beneficial to that commission. And I looked at Mike Williams, I had requested that Mike consider his application as an insurance specialist and someone that understands that process. And then I noticed one of the applicants was Vernon Hess. He did not indicate this is one of his preferences, but he did have previous real estate experience. So that's my conversation piece, my narrative on it. Does anybody have any other comments or thoughts?
That, that pretty much four times, you know, you know, my review of those.
Have you had any thoughts? I'm okay with that. All right, so, well, David, should we, can we do all these as one motion? Can we just work through them? Okay. So next is our Public Transit Advisory Commission. I think we've got two openings there, isn't that right, John?
Yes.
I had, I had John Matheson and you, I think you had Wendy Bridges. Harold, who, who did you?
I'm fine with those two. Why, let me, back this as mine, that, that, that particular commission is still very active?
We try to meet, as, don't meet monthly. You know, if we don't have major complaints throughout changes or any updates from the feds and state, especially we do it a lot of emails, send the vast amount of information. So it's as needed, but definitely at least once a quarter, not every other month.
But is there, there's updates on the motivation of staff to this?
Okay, thank you. And I think Wendy Bridges was another one that had, didn't really have this down as their commission appointment request, but might would be a good one we could ask.
Okay.
And just, so is that good?
That's good.
Public Transit Advisory Commission, we're two vacancies.
May I ask you, because there are two different dates of the applications.
Oh, yeah.
Check with Bridges for the twenty, two thousand twenty-three or?
I think that would be, that would be fine. Bridges for twenty-three and Matheson for twenty-four.
And for the HPC, there's one that is, uh, uh.
I think if we put Vernon Hess on that one, since we're gonna have to ask serve there, that would probably be best. Now, moving on, we've got Board of Adjustments, we've got one vacancy and one alternate vacancy, but we do not have any.
We are, David Huffman and I have been working on some, there is some consideration about the new requirements from the General Assembly for the Board of Adjustment that have made, do you wanna speak to that, David?
And because they call them quasi judicial hearings, but as a practical matter, the quasi is taking a backseat judicial for some of the recent cases that have come down.
They're very judicial.
Yes.
Instead of quasi.
Or procedural deprocess. That will have individuals on board that are aware of the process.
So Board of Adjustments and then the ETJC. Should we just leave those vacant, let you guys work through that? And then, so then we move on to CPAT. There is one vacancy on CPAT.
And this was for a, the representative who was an ABSs teacher. So we don't have any current vacancies, I mean, applicants that fit that role, but we can still, as you guys discussed last time, still it.
No ABSs.
Yep, Tommy Marley, I had that too. So I'm good with that.
I'm starting to be willing to hold it up.
Absolutely. We gotta hold Board of Adjustments anyway, let me just add this one to. So, so just recapping, will be Historic Preservation Commission will be Mike Williams, twenty-five, Christina Benson, twenty-five, Vernon Hess, twenty-four. And then Public Transit Advisory Commission, Matheson, twenty-three, Wendy Bridges, twenty-four. Those are the five that, that is their motion to accept those five to fill those seats.
So move.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Any votes? Okay. And we will hold Board of Adjustments and CPAT. Chief, just let us know. We do appreciate people that has interest in these boards.
Absolutely.
They're really important. Thank you. Absolutely. So thank you, John, for all the work on that. Our next item, item nine, City Council will receive a presentation of proposed amendments to the City of Burlington City Code ordinances. This is really a matter of procedure. We were, we went through these last night at a work session. And we'll call on City Attorney David Huffman to kind of just touch base on this.
I really have nothing to add more than what we covered last evening and just hope to say that these proposed changes to the city code are basically based upon the two thousand twenty-one case session law changes whereby the legislature decriminalized it took the ability of the local municipalities and counties to enforce its ordinance, its local ordinance by way of criminal misdemeanors and fractures on a blanket basis. And that, of course, is what was available too, and what we did at Burlington. I oversaw the last six days once these individual one has, and then with the little office, it's off the each and every code section. And we have made this week, this week, we set those out for you. It was two years, I was like, two weeks ago, and I keep talking to you. As well as last night's presentations. What's, one of the, we just asked, do not vote on this this evening because based upon statute one sixty-eight, one seventy-five, it requires that these things come off to two different sessions and be voted on the second session. So maybe this come back on the second session for you two.
This is a introductory.
This will be a, I am for business on the floor. All right, and no action? All right, wonderful. Thank you. Our next item is public comment period, public comments are for issues that are not on our agenda. So we'll also entertain public comments for a five-minute period. So at this point in time, we have one public comment request from Alex Alfonso, eleven oh five Hawthorne Lane. Alex, good to see you.
Good to see you. Nice to be back in the building. My name is Alex Alfonso. I live at eleven oh five Hawthorne Lane. I sent Mayor, Council members an email earlier today with revenue expenditure reports of the Valley Golf Course from nineteen ninety-six up until the present, or until at least last year. I don't think this, this fiscal year is over yet. And, but I, I wanna focus on the last two years. In the last two years, the Valley Golf Course has lost half a million dollars, half a million dollars. That's not what's been invested into the Valley Golf Course. What's been invested into the Valley Golf Course the last two years is one point five million dollars. All right. Now, to spend one point five million dollars to lose five hundred thousand dollars doesn't make a lot of sense. However, it's not surprising. Unfortunately, it's par for the course. It's, thank you, thank you. This, this entity has lost money years and years now, on average, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars a year. What is surprising is that in two years ago, myself and a couple of the other disc golf clubs in the county and the area came to the council with an offer to mitigate or altogether avoid that loss by introducing disc golf to the golf course. Disc golf has grown exponentially in the last five years. And what I'm asking for is not not over two hundred municipal golf courses in the United States has introduced disc golf because they were losing money and disc golf helped make ends meet. This past October, I played in a tournament at the Lake Lure Golf Club in Lake Lure, North Carolina. I paid a hundred dollars for the privilege. My wife and I made a weekend out of it. Thank you to her. We rented an Airbnb out there, we had dinner at Berkshire Winery. We enjoyed a brewery out there. In short, we spent money. We, we contributed to the economic health of Lake Lure. Unfortunately, I could not go back this year because that golf course closed because it was losing money. And they seemed to embrace the idea of disc golf a little too late and they did not have a permanent course on there. It was just a temporary course that they set up for the tournament. This is a different situation than what we have in Jacksonville, Florida, in the New World Sports Complex. Their municipal property that has a golf course has embraced disc golf. And they are generating thirty thousand dollars a month selling beer to those who are over twenty-one, selling discs out of the pro shop and renting golf carts to disc golfers. It doesn't make economic sense to continue down the path we're going here in Burlington when innovation is happening and is making these golf courses solvent. The plan that we had here in Burlington was to overlay twenty-four disc golf holes over the eighteen holes at the Valley. Charge for carts, green fees, you'd also get some beer and discs out of the pro shop. I believe that this would generate enough revenue to cover the losses and make it solvent. And I just don't understand why we haven't got a proper hearing on it. Years and years and years, last year by one of the city managers, Assistant City Manager is not here any longer. I was told that this plan was premature. If you look at the numbers that I sent you guys today, I think you'll figure out that it's about twenty years overdue. I'd just like to know why, if this doesn't make economic sense to me, and I don't think it would say why it makes economic sense to the council here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to City Council comments. There's a couple of comments I want to bring up. One is, we do have our e-waste that's coming up. That's gonna be at two thirty-four East Summit Avenue, our Public Works parking lot. So that's Saturday, October first. So anybody that has home electronics, personal computers, personal electronics, any other electronics, it's a good time to get rid of that and do it in a, in a responsible manner. Certainly, staff set up to handle that. I know we do this a couple of times a year. What's not accepted is batteries, white goods, appliances, air conditioning units, non-electronic items. But it is a good opportunity to get rid of e-waste. So if for those of you that need, need that venue, then certainly that's available. And then the second thing, the last item I had on my list was it's good to see the trees on South Church Street.
Yes.
Wells Fargo.
Yes.
Gone, the ones with the great big gaping hole that looked like they were. Go first, isn't it?
I think somebody was out there one day actually trying to kick a football through it.
It was Gary Smith, it was Mr. McNabb. So I know a lot of work and effort went into that and that was, that was on Wells Fargo's property, but as I understand, Duke Energy or their contractors got involved. So I know some work on city staff was sort of really generated that response. So thanks to city staff for looking into that. That was an accident waiting to happen at some point. But that's all I do have. Any other council comments at this time? There's no other council comments, no other staff issues, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, the second, second, motion is second, all in favor, signify by aye. We are adjourned.